All right, just call the board. Ready, colors? Heart.
Here's our cannon and
Colors.
Master Sergeant Gardner Hall.
And face. Present, colors.
Of the United States of America, and to the people who worship Satan, and to the children of God, and to the visible, the very creature of justice.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, its red flag was still there. Oh, say, doth that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Our hearts. And heads. Our hearts.
All right, roll call, please.
Stanley Gatzick, present. Brendan Wong, present.
Colin Conklin, present.
Cheryl Messero.
Sally Hunt.
Kristy Chong.
Will Furry.
LaShaka Moore.
Okay, so we're going to move on to special announcements. We have proclamations. And we're going to start with the 2.02 School Library Month presenter, Celeste Akerman.
Good evening, School Board Chair, Mr. Fury, Furry, Superintendent Ms. Moore, and School Board members. I am here tonight as the supervisor of media to stand with these amazing people. It makes my heart race, the amount of love I have for them and our media centers in our schools. And our schools could not survive and our students could not succeed without our media centers. They are an amazing group of people. They are passionate, they are kind, and they do wonderful things for our school district. So tonight, we are going to read the Library Month proclamation. And we're going to have Heidi Corchata is going to finish it off, and then Kim Wix is going to start it off for us.
Whereas April 2024 has been designated the 39th Annual National School Library Month. And whereas, school libraries provide materials for teachers and students that will encourage growth and knowledge. And whereas, school libraries provide materials that will develop literacy skills, cultural awareness, aesthetic appreciation, and ethical standards. And whereas, school libraries provide materials that reflect the ideas and beliefs of different religious, social, political, historical, and ethnic groups and their contributions to American and world heritage and culture.
Whereas, school libraries provide access to both physical and digital books to encourage children to read for pleasure. And whereas, school libraries provide materials to meet individual needs, varied interests, abilities, socioeconomic, economic backgrounds, and maturity levels of the students served. And whereas, school libraries serve as positive environments for all students to access and engage with a well-managed library that provides for free expression and access to ideas. And whereas, we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to promoting the physical, social, and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, and nurturing environment.
Now therefore be it resolved by the Flagler County School Board that we do hereby recognize April 2024 as School Library Month and urge all citizens to recognize the important role our school libraries play in the education for our community's children. Adopted by members of the Flagler County School Board, Flagler County, Florida, at the regular open public meeting thereof, held on the 26th day of March 2024, signed by myself, Will Furry, Chair of the Flagler County School Board, and LaShaka Moore, Superintendent of Flagler Schools. Thank you for reading that to us tonight.
Chairman Fury, ladies, may I just appoint a privilege, please?
Yeah, please do.
I just want to take a moment. I know all of you know this, but the community may not know this. You are by far the unsung heroes of the last several years. I know that the hours that you have put in reviewing every single book in our district, thousands of hours of your time, and have been in many ways put through the wringer. I just want you to know, I see you, we see you, we know what you've gone through over the last several years, and we appreciate you very, very much. So thank you for all that you do, in spite of some of the challenges. Really appreciate you.
Picture? Picture, come on.
Okay, our next proclamation is Child Abuse Prevention Month, presented by Randy Williams.
Good evening, Board. This is not close enough. Good evening, Superintendent Moore, Chair Furry, and Board. Flagler Schools works really closely with a lot of agencies that support our students who have unfortunately been at the hand of some sort of domestic dispute and abuse. And so, April is Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month, and I'm here to read the resolution for the Child Abuse Prevention Month. So, whereas, the Flagler County Guardian Ed Leitem Office currently has 34 cases of child neglect, abuse, or abandonment involving 50 children. And whereas, child abuse and neglect is a serious problem affecting every segment of our community, and finding solutions requires input and action from everyone. And whereas, our children are our most valuable resources, and vulnerable, and will shape the future of Flagler County. And whereas, child abuse can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that have lasting consequences of victims of abuse. And whereas, protective factors and conditions that reduce or eliminate risk and promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children. And whereas, effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the partnerships created between child welfare professionals, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, and families. And whereas, communities make every effort, must make every effort, to promote programs and activities that create strong and thriving children and families. And whereas, we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to promoting the physical, social, and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, and nurturing environment. And whereas, prevention remains the best defense of our children and families. Yes.
Now therefore be it resolved by the Flagler County School Board that we do hereby recognize April 2024 as National Child Abuse Prevention Month and urge all children to recognize this month by dedicating ourselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families. Adopted by the members of the Flagler County School Board, Flagler County, Florida, at the regular open public meeting thereof, held on the 26th day of March 2024, signed by myself, Will Furry, Chairman of Flagler County School Board, and LaShaka Moore, Superintendent of Flagler Schools.
Thank you, Board.
So our next proclamation is Autism Acceptance Month, presented by Dr. Kim Holliday.
Good evening, Chair Furry, Superintendent Moore, esteemed Board and community that's listening. Tonight, what we are going to share with you is a little bit about autism awareness, but also I want to let you know that World Autism Awareness Day is Tuesday, April 2nd, so I want you all to consider to wear blue on that day. We also have some events coming up that we're going to share with you after our proclamation. We do have a community of families sharing with me this evening, and teachers, and students on the spectrum that very much are part of our community, and we appreciate the opportunity to read this proclamation tonight. I'll start? And then we'll just begin. Whereas, Autism Acceptance Month, previously named Autism Awareness Month in April, aims to celebrate and promote acceptance for the conditions that occur in one of every 36 children as of 2023 in the United States. Whereas, autism, a complex developmental condition affecting the patient's ability to interact, communicate, and progress, has not one but many subtypes. First held in the year 1972 by the Autism Society, Autism Acceptance Month emphasizes the need for public awareness to promote acceptance, celebrate the differences, and be more inclusive towards autistic individuals around us. And?
Whereas, every April, the Autism Society works to build an inclusive community where autistic individuals are embraced and supported to achieve the highest quality of life possible.
Whereas, the Autism Society was founded in 1965 by Bernard Rumlin. It is driven by the fact that autism is the fastest-growing developmental disability in the world. The Autism Society hosted one of its first nationwide efforts of awareness campaign called National Autistic Children's Week in 1972, which subsequently evolved into Autism Awareness Month earmarked in April.
Whereas, in 2021, Autism Awareness Month was renamed Autism Acceptance Month to foster acceptance and ignite changes. The Autism Society deeply understands the need to foster awareness and acceptance to ignite change in a healthier lifestyle through improved opportunities for people with autism. The organization caters to more than 600,000 people living under the autism onslaught using tools like community partnerships with organizations, digital and print resources, along with events and referrals to spark empathy and inclusivity.
Whereas, with the autism diagnosis rate increasing fast, we take these 30 days of April to celebrate the differences, learn more about, and empower individuals with autism. Whereas, in Flagler School, the number of students served under the IDEA classification of autism spectrum disorder has gone from 189 in 2018 and 19 to 275 in 2023, 24.
Now therefore be it resolved by the Flagler County School Board that we do hereby join the nation in recognizing April 2024 as National Autism Acceptance Month, as a symbol of our commitment to creating a culture of disability awareness and inclusion for all members of our community. Adopted by the members of the Flagler County School Board, Flagler County, Florida, at the regular open public meeting thereof, held on the 26th day of March 2024, signed by myself, Will Furry, Chairman of the Board, Flagler County School Board, and LaShaka Moore, Superintendent, Flagler County School Board.
Thank you. And we just wanted to take a moment to invite all of you to please come to our Vincent's Clubhouse Second Annual Autism Awareness Festival and Resource Fair. This will be held Saturday, April 6th, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Central Park in Town Center. We have done an excellent job of recruiting many different resources to help individuals with autism in our community and their parents. We're going to have food trucks, performances, vendors, and a free bounce house village. Our goal is to have our whole community come together in one place to celebrate autism awareness and acceptance in Flagler County. So please, we would love to see you there.
Okay, our next proclamation is Florida Volunteer Month, presented by Suzie Gambling. Welcome.
Thank you so much for having us here tonight to appreciate the volunteers that serve our community, not just in the Flagler County School District, but everywhere in Flagler County. The school district, of course, there's many volunteers that help and provide a lot of assistance. So thank you very much for having me here tonight to read this proclamation. Whereas, April is Florida Volunteer Month, National Service Recognition Day is April 2nd, 2024, and National Public School Volunteer Week is April 21st through the 27th, 2024. And whereas, National Volunteer Week was established as the official time to recognize and celebrate the efforts of volunteers at the local, state, and national levels. And whereas, volunteers can connect with local community service experiences through hundreds of community service organizations, including Flagler Volunteer Services. And whereas, volunteers address the most pressing challenges facing our schools, our cities, counties, and our nation, from educating students for the jobs of the 21st century and supporting veterans and military families, to preserving the environment and helping communities recover from national disasters. And whereas, volunteering enhances the lives of volunteers, increases self-esteem and physical well-being, provides opportunities to learn new skills and abilities, and offers the chance to meet new friends and associates. And whereas- And whereas schools, nonprofits, charities, community, and faith-based groups, national service programs, and volunteer centers such as Flagler Volunteer Services have joined with state and local governments to celebrate and praise volunteers who have given tirelessly and selflessly to the service of others. And whereas volunteers are vital to our future as a caring and productive nation.
Now therefore be it proclaimed by this School Board of Flagler County, Florida, that we do hereby recognize April 2024 as Volunteer Month and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of volunteer service in our community, to thank those who serve and to find ways to give back to their communities. Dated this 26th day of March 2024, signed by myself, Will Furry, Chair of the Flagler County School Board, and LaShaka Moore, Superintendent of Flagler Schools. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I did just want to share real quickly some of the things that Flagler Volunteer Services and the volunteers have done in the school district this past year. Our agency, Flagler Volunteer Services, had a long history of working hand-in-hand with Flagler County Schools, and this past year we provided volunteer assistance with the following. We had 358 volunteers who reported serving 8,709 hours at the school district. We had volunteers that served in our reading pals program that serves students in VPK through 3rd grade. We had 76 volunteers and they helped 177 students. We also conducted our giving store program for Flagler County students where we had 354 children be able to select gifts free of charge for their family members during the holiday season. It used 121 volunteers to make that happen. We also provided volunteers for the first week of school with kindergarten assistance. We provided volunteers that supported your health screenings of all the students in all of the schools. We provided volunteers to help at the holiday shops, the book fairs, and many of your special events. And we also have volunteers that serve as teachers aides in various roles throughout the school district. So we're very entangled in Flagler County Schools. We really appreciate the support that you have always provided us. We, as you may know, we have had some detrimental impact to our agency since COVID. Not only was there a lot of change in volunteerism throughout the community, which was challenging enough, but it was also during that time that we lost our free office space that the school district had provided us before, as well as we lost $25,000 in re-acquiring funding that we had had for both of those things for about 15 years, so we were pretty accustomed to having it. We have since relocated to a new office, rebuilt our volunteer base. It's very solid with numerous activities throughout the community. But at this time, we're still functioning with a deficit in our budget. So we are looking for help. We would love to schedule a meeting to discuss our needs and our value to the school district with your administration and see if there's any opportunities and ways that we could help get our organization back out of the deficit. I do want to thank you all. I have been with Flagler Volunteer Services and Volunteer Management for 30 years, and I want to thank you all because without the school board's commitment to volunteerism throughout the years, we would not have ever even been able to form. I mean, like you have been such a huge supporter of our agency, and so I really appreciate the support you have for volunteerism in Flagler County Schools and in the community itself. So thank you very much.
Thank you for all you do for our community and for our schools. And I'm sure somebody from our staff will reach out on your request, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Picture, yes. Please.
Come on, center, 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 let's center.
Centered right now. Don't move too much. All tight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so next we have the Voters Guide Cover Design Contest judging, and so please welcome our Supervisor of Election, Katie Lenhart.
Good evening, School Board. Thank you for having me. I don't think my student is here. Gabriel? Gabriel Guzman? No, darn. Okay, well, he said, no. Anyway, he said he was coming, but unfortunately Gabriel could not make it. So this presentation is all about our Voters Guide Design Contest for the cover of our Voters Guide. You guys all have one. I put them at your spots there. There's some in the back, near the agenda and the public comment sign-ins. You're welcome to grab one on your way out for the public that's here tonight. This is our 14th annual contest, and it's really geared towards our high school students, both at Batanzas and FPC. So those students that are enrolled in digital design courses there, they are offered the opportunity to design the cover of our Voter Guide. And it's really, it's a great program, really, for several different reasons, mostly because the students are involved in a real-world design project. So they're able to use their skills in graphic design to make something that's going to be used in the community. And what more better impact is there than the Voter Guide cover? So especially this year, you guys know it's a very historic election year. If you didn't know, it's a presidential election year. I have to say that out loud. So this Voters Guide is what we use throughout the county. It's very popular, public outreach materials for us at all of our community events, in the office, everywhere we go, we hand these out. It shows people how to register to vote, how to vote, the three different methods to vote, all about, there's even a section here now, a new section for election security, all about what we do to protect the vote. And it's just a great publication, and the students are very engaged, and the teachers can use this to, you know, incorporate some civic education in the classroom. So it's a great, it's a great program. So congratulations to Gabriel. He's a student at FPC. And for the past nine years, congratulations to FPC for being winners of the contest. So it's very exciting. I had his certificate here, but I will deliver that to the school tomorrow instead. So thank you again for this partnership with the Elections Office. We really appreciate being able to engage our students and those involved with graphic design. So thanks again.
Yes, thank you.
Yep, have a great night.
For those that know, we did have a vote at our last workshop, and we had several entries.
Yes.
They were spread out on a table, and we all had to pick the ones we liked the best. It was very difficult. We had a lot of talented artists in our schools, but congratulations to Gabriel Guzman.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we move on to Spotlight, Superintendent Strategic Plan Spotlight. Do you have anything for tonight?
Yes, I want to briefly spotlight goal four, talent, and recognize Ms. Angela Dawson, who works in our community engagement, and she is retiring. Yes, so she does such a great job of making sure that we, I know she's like sinking in her seat, making sure we have a presence in the community. So thank you so much, Angela. We appreciate you so much and all that you do, and we know that you're going to get connected by volunteering because you've already volunteered for some things. So thank you so much for all that you have done for Flagler Schools, and we hope you enjoy retirement.
Okay, so now we're going to move on to Flagler County Education Foundation Spotlight, Mr. Teresa Rizzo.
I have some slides. They're on the Word docs? Yes. Do them in order. It would be perfect. Thank you, Brian. Good evening, School Board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak again tonight. We are actually, my spotlight tonight is on our Classroom to Careers programs, which we partner with the United Way, who is a supporter of this. So first is our Third Annual Joe Rizzo Memorial Golf Classic, which will be happening on April 8th. And this, all the proceeds from this actually go to support our classrooms to careers programs. We also have, let me see what the next slide is before I start talking. I think it might be tours. We have some tours coming up. We have actually one this Thursday, March 28th. And actually, I'll just talk about this. So this is, this is our Classroom to Careers programs, how we connect the business community to our classrooms. You actually see Rem Fire there and their Medical Classroom to Careers Day. We had our second one just recently. We will, and the students actually have a passport that they get signed throughout the year, and if they get their passport completed, we will take them on a field trip to Advent Health so that they can visit the SIM lab there. And if you've ever been there, it's absolutely amazing, and this is an opportunity to expose our elementary school students to careers that they might be interested in beyond high school, which is the purpose of Classroom to Careers, to expose students to opportunities they might be interested in beyond high school. We also had Quantum Electric, Mr. Joe Wright, come in and speak to Ms. Booker's class, which is our on-the-job training class at FPC for three days, talking about entrepreneurship, becoming electrician, apprenticeship, and journeyman. And it was, the kids loved it. I have to say personally, there were some students in the classroom that I had in kindergarten and first grade, which is just so awesome to me, and they were excited about it and talking about giving back to our community and becoming career-minded right here in Flagler County. So it was incredible. And the last one is our tours. So we do provide opportunities for our community to visit these classrooms and see what students are actually doing. I always say, you have to experience it to understand it. You have to see it, you have to feel it, you have to speak to the kids. Otherwise, you don't understand the amazing things happening in our classrooms. Superintendent Moore has challenged the Education Foundation to provide these tours on a monthly basis. You can actually scan this QR code right here if you're interested in attending, and we would love to take you on a tour and see the great things happening in Flagler Schools. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Okay, so now we're going to move on to approval of minutes, 4.01 through 4.03. Just need a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion from, I need a second. Have a motion from Ms. Chong and a second from Dr. Conklin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? It passes unanimously. We'll move on to adoption or changes to the agenda. Do we have any adoption or changes to the agenda?
Yes, and I do apologize for this error. We need to move 10.01 from Operational Services Consent to 17.01 Operational Services Action. That item should have been in action and not in consent, and I do apologize for that error.
Okay, we will make that change to the agenda. If there are no others, we will move on to public comments. So today, I just want to remind everybody of a couple of rules with public comment. Our first segment of public comment are for agenda items only. Just want to remind you to address your comments to the Board Chair or the board as a whole, and if you can, please respect your time limit to allow everybody ample time to speak. So do we have anybody signed up? Ah, okay, we'll back up a little bit here, apologize. We do need to approve the changes, so I need a motion to approve the changes to the agenda.
So moved.
Yeah, I have a motion by Ms. Massaro and a second by Dr. Conklin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The vote passes unanimously. Okay, so now we'll move on to public comment, 6.01. Do we have anybody signed up?
Judy Becksack.
Okay, please come forward.
And she'll be speaking on Beltier.
I know you're tired of seeing me today, but I'm going to speak again. I'm addressing the Beltier Women Racquet Club, and I was at the workshop today, and there was quite a discussion about it. And I just want to say I'd like to have the board stick, first of all, to their vote at the end of July that said they would not revisit this until July or August of this year, and if they then decided that the financial aspect of the place hadn't met goals, that they would then close it as of December 31st. Now it's being brought up to do this earlier. And one of the things said today, I don't want to single out anybody, but that, well, that's what we voted on then, and we can change our minds now. Well, I think that it is owed to the public that when you vote on something, that you stick to what you voted on. That's my first thing. Second of all, I want to say that the place is wonderful, and I realize that we operate at a negative thing, but some of that is because of the hours. We're not open Sundays. We close Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday at 3:00. Monday, Wednesday, Fridays only to 6:00. So you only can have people that are non-nine-to-five show up, so that's why it's mostly seniors. I think that this place, the more it's promoted, the more people we would have. It has been going up in numbers. I think for those who have not been there, you have no idea what a fabulous place you're missing, and I can only hope that the school board will continue to support us as they have in the past. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments. During public comment, though, we do not have any clapping or celebration for public comments. So next speaker, please.
No one else has signed up unless someone else would like to speak.
Okay. Is there anybody else that would like to speak that hasn't signed up? You, sir? Yeah, please come forward.
My name's Vince Calata, and I want to thank you for just giving me this opportunity to speak. I've been a member of the facility there now for almost 10 years, and I just want to share my story. About three years ago, I was diagnosed with non-Hodgkin's lymphoma, and after undergoing a lot of extensive chemotherapy, I really needed a way to get back to my physical health, stamina. And just by going there motivated me to continue to work out a little at a time, and it's three years today that I'm cancer-free. And it's just more than a facility. There's a lot of elderly people there that couldn't really go to another gym. If they go to another facility, I know for a fact that they're shunned because they can hardly walk, some of them. But that facility really makes a difference in people's lives, and it's not just about the dollars and cents. In some cases, it's life and death. So I just would like you to take that into consideration when you make your decisions, and it really has a big impact on the community. And if any of yous haven't been there, please come to visit and just see it from a different perspective. Thank you.
Okay, any other members of the audience that would like to come forward? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public comment, and we will move on to our consent agenda. Now, we will move through these quite quickly because we've already workshopped these items. So we're going to start with seven finance consent, 7.01 through 7.08. I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
And I need a second?
Second.
Have a motion by Ms. Massaro and a second by Ms. Chong. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. So we're going to move on to eight, technology, 8.01, board approval for award of contract for innovation to bid on the E-Rate category for broadband internal connection components. I need a motion to approve. Second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Dr. Conklin and a second by Ms. Hunt. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Motion passes. So we're moving on to now nine, academic services, 9.01 to 9.02. I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion by Ms. Chong and a second by Ms. Massaro. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Move on to 10, operational service consent, Belt, oh, okay, this, sorry, we're moving this item to action. So we are passing, going through this here. 11, human resource service consent, 11.01. I need a motion.
Move.
I have a, I need a second?
Second.
Second.
I have a motion by Dr. Conklin and a second by Ms. Chong. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay. So now we're moving to the 17, oh, and which is the Beltier Swimming Racket Club. And so now, we did have this on our earlier agenda on, at our workshop. And so we did have some robust discussion about this. And so we'll continue that here this evening. Ms. Chong, I know you were, you were not able to make it to the workshop. So we had some discussion about the possibilities of, of ending the membership component of the swimming pool, the racket club. And so that's where we left off.
And I did watch that portion of the meeting.
Okay, you did, great. Did you have anything to add to that conversation or any questions about?
The only thing I wanted to clarify from y'all is, I know you were talking about phasing out certain parts, or I just wanted to get a little...
Well, from, from my perspective, this is, this is what I see would be, if the board's will is to, to end the membership component of this, of the pool and keep it as a student-focused facility, my, my vision is that based on information that I received from Mr. Delaney in regards to the insurance membership contracts, they do require some notice or a mutual termination. So one way of, of doing a phase-out would be to, to close the, the pool for membership in the fiscal year, keep the gym open until either the contracts run out or a mutual agreement could be made for termination of those contracts, and whichever would happen first. So it would either, the gym would potentially stay open to a maximum of the end of 2024, or when those contracts could be negotiated without, with a mutual exit. And so that, that was the kind of the phased-out approach that I presented at the workshop.
So closing the pool at the end of the fiscal year and, and then the gym later? Is that what we're all...
Well, that, well, that was what I proposed, yeah, so.
Yeah, no.
No.
If... I just want to ask a question about that, Chair Fury. So if we were to do that and close the pool to the members, we still have the cost of maintaining the pool. So we're, we're, we still have the cost of maintaining and running the pool, but now we're not getting that revenue.
Well, the, the pool would no longer be, the pool would only be used for, by the students or by facility use. And from what I was told, to, to maintain the gym, we would only need one employee on-site to do that. So yes, we would still have additional costs, but the staffing would be reduced tremendously. And the, the only reason why, in, in, in my version of this here, that we would even have this component to, to stretch the gym staying open, it would be just to satisfy the contracts that we have with the insurance company. So, but we, it is very likely that we might be able to reach mutual agreement long before that. And if that was the case, then the gym would close at an earlier date than that. But if we could not come to mutual agreement with the insurance companies, then we would let the contracts run out or weigh out what, what a buyout of that would be. I, I don't exactly know how these exit, but through my proposal, we wouldn't have to worry about that through the motion, because we would be, we would be saying we would carry out the gym through the end of the year if we could not get out of the, the contracts with the insurance companies.
Okay, so you're, but you're still paying for lifeguards?
Well, lifeguards would only need to be there if it was under facility use, because the, the, the pool would no longer be accessible to members. It would only be the gym only.
So I don't want to complicate this further. Mr. Freeman, Mr. Walker, do you guys have input on this? On a phased-out approach?
Well, can we just maybe ask specific, just a, a specific question, Kristi? I'm sorry. If you guys can address what Chair Fury just said, it's my understanding that when the swim team uses the pool, their coach or someone with the team is a certified lifeguard, and they do not require a paid lifeguard, correct?
Yep. Yep, that is correct.
Okay. And so Kristi, I'm so sorry. So yeah, that's all, thank you. Yes, whatever Kristi asked, thank you.
I have a question, too. What, would you be more specific with the dates? Thank you.
The dates I propose, that the, the pool membership would end effective the end of our, our fiscal year. And then the, but the, the gym would remain open until the end of 2024, or when we could have an exit from the insurance membership contracts, whichever happened first. So if, if we were successful in, in negotiating with the insurance membership contracts to exit before the end of 2024, that, that would be the date that the, the gym would close. We'd only keep it open to satisfy the contractual obligation we have with the gym, I mean, with the insurance companies.
So you want to close the gym on June 30th at the highlight of our income for summer and for kids and for families? Is that correct?
I want to close the...
That is our fiscal year, June 30th.
Okay. The date is correct. But the reason why I want to close it is because we clearly had, if, for the members of the public, you can watch our workshop earlier today, is that last year, we lost $175,000 on this membership club. This year, we're projected to lose $176,000. And with the new fee structure that we changed, the hope was, is that the, the insurance members would see the value in paying for the pool. Because insurance members, we only receive maybe a dollar to $5 for each one of those members, where a, a regular member pays upwards of average of $35 a month. So the hope was that, once we made the, separated the gym from the pool, that those members would see value there and, and then buy a membership for the, 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 the pool access, which would provide additional revenue that could hopefully close the gap on this $176,000 projected loss for this year. But as of, that was back in, I believe, July, we, we, we did that motion, and we're now here almost in April, and we're, we're not really moving the needle. There's no real path forward, I see here, to where we would see a significant change in membership to offset these losses. We would need to have around, to, to wipe it out, which we, we all agreed that that probably was not going to be possible. But that would take nearly 3,000 memberships. And to just, to just kind of get it to the point where it would be the same as a student-focused facility was like, it's approximately like 1,500 additional memberships that we would need. And this is, these, there's just no path forward. I do not see that that can happen between now and, you know, August, or pick your date. And historically, it's proven itself that it can't. And if it didn't do it then, and it didn't do it now, I don't think it's going to do it in the future. And the data, to me, supports that projection. So that's the reason why I want to close it. And those dates are, it would be, in my view, to do it all at the end of the fiscal year. But the only reason why we're extending it on is because of the insurance membership contracts and the unknown ability to exit those.
So extending the, the gym portion?
Yeah, so the gym portion would stay until the end of 2024, which is the maximum obligation we would have currently, based on Mr. Delaney's assessment of those contracts. And, or when we could reach a mutual termination with the insurance companies, whichever happens first. So if the, we were able to negotiate a termination, then at that, when the last contract is, is terminated, then that would be the day that the, that the gym would close.
All right, my turn. Okay. Okay, first of all, the $176,000 is a projection. It's not sealed in stone. It is a projection. We could lose that much, we could lose more, we could also lose less. So I, you know, you're, you're hanging everything on that figure, and I'm not sure that's the most accurate thing to do. Second, the most income that's generated by that facility is in the summer. Okay? In a full summer. We have finally raised the fees to where you felt comfortable with. We agreed to that and got that passed. And since seven weeks ago, we have picked up 76 new members. That's 10 members per week. And that's not even with the summer here yet. That's just with the break of nice weather. So to eliminate July, the hottest month of the year here in Flor, in Florida, along with August, it, it just seems foolish, because that's when we're going to make the most money and cut into the deficit the best that we possibly can. So originally, when we had passed maintaining memberships as a board, the idea was to maintain the memberships until September, make a decision in September, and close if it doesn't meet expectations in December. That makes sense. I get that, and I agreed to that. And it totally makes sense. To cut the pool out from our residents and our community members and our children who don't have pools, who can learn, you know, yes, they'll be able to take swim class lessons if they can get to them, you know, not necessarily with their family, it is just, it seems ludicrous to me, because there's no guarantee we're going to lose $176,000. And I think that's where we're, you know, we could, we could, I'm not saying it's not probable, it could happen. But, you know, I just think that it's unfair to our community, it's unfair to the members that have purchased memberships, that expect that, that are willing to understand if it doesn't make it later, that it's going to close. And it saves this board also a lot of aggravation and community upris. So, I mean, that is my concern, and I, I don't want to be bullied into anything else, and I hope the rest of this board feels that way. They understand the need of this community. This community is asking us, what's a couple more months? We've been going through this for so long, we had a plan, and now we want to change it. And I don't think that's really good for us as a school board to maintain.
Can I just speak to that real quick? Because something that I've brought up, and, and please do correct me if I'm wrong, when you say we had a plan, something that I've brought up in a previous workshop or board meeting is, I, I am not aware that we saw this through as a board, that we did in fact have a plan. Something that I have been asking for is, what are the metrics? What I did not want is that we would come to, whether it be August or whatever, and it's the same crazy that I experienced when this happened the last time. I wanted it to be very crystal clear. These are the figures we all agree to, because that's been a contentious point. These are the figures we agree to, these are the metrics, right, that we, and if we vote on it or whatever, something I've made very clear, I'm not okay with any loss. I'm not okay with any loss from any organization that's using our facility. And that's something that we would, we would discuss. So when you talk about having a plan, I don't feel that there was ever even a plan. It was kind of like, what I have observed with the Beltiers Swimming Racket Club is kind of this, almost like this delay, like, ooh, let's get, let's get another few months, let's get another year, let's get another few months, let's get another year. And I wanted to, at the very minimum, again, be very structured in this. And so when I voted with the three of you for this plan, it was with the understanding that we would be very clear in our expectations on the numbers. And that, to my knowledge, again, correct me if I'm wrong, that conversation has not happened. So now, in place of that, when we're kind of now midway through and looking at the numbers, talking with Josh, talking with Dave, and I understand that it's a projection, but the, it was looking pretty clear that, you know, we did the drive, you know, we've done advertising, we've done the drive, we've, members have had the opportunity to sign up for these different price points and memberships. So in the absence of having those metrics that I thought were coming along, now I, I am now kind of in this different place. So I just wanted to let you kind of know where I'm coming from on that.
Well, first of all, we, we did have a plan. We, we actually, on May 16th of '23, was when we had the motion, okay? And that's at the 2 hour, 48 minute, 40 second timeframe, so you can check it out. We did have a plan. And the plan was to maintain the membership, as I said before, until the end of the summer. And then if things, we would have another presentation financially, after it had a summer to work through, all our new fees. If it didn't meet, then it was going to close at December. Okay? But that was the plan. That was the plan that we had all talked about. Now, we didn't make a motion on that. The motion was to maintain membership. That's what the motion was. So it was discussed, and that's why our, our administrators are presenting, that's why they presented now, because that was the timeframe that was set up to have a review done. Simple as that. And this is just to be a review. From this review, we've gotten to closing the facility tomorrow. You know, and now, now we're, we're looking at it. So that, that's problematic. But here's the situation, Sally. In that timeframe, they finally got the membership structure settled, they finally got the online registration, which they were unable to do in the past, that just started recently. How long ago did that start, Josh?
Probably about a month ago.
A month ago?
Shortly after our February 20th update.
Right. So now, all of that advertisement and all those things, and the weather changing, has increased our membership by 76 people. That's a lot in seven weeks. That's a lot of people, and we're not near the summer. So it is showing that it's working. Okay? Maybe it's not going to work enough to cut into $176,000 forecasted deficit, but it is showing improvement. And we're not taking into effect the monies that we are making through Beltier, the FTC's classes and water, what do they have now? Water...
Aqua Fusion.
Yeah, Aqua Fusion and things like that, and other forms of income. So there's other ways to make income, but it is showing change. I'm not saying keep it open forever. I'm saying, I think we owe our general public to keep it open long enough to see if it is going to make a change or not, and get it through its highest season with all these new things in effect. And if it doesn't, we pull the plug, just like it said. And it keeps everybody on the same page. It keeps our community happy. They'll hate losing it, but they'll understand, instead of just saying, okay, we're done. Pull the plug. That's where my head is.
I, I hear what you're saying, but I do think it, you know, here we are, we're having a review about halfway through, and I think we just have to also ethically be financially responsible. And if things are not going to change much more, then we need to be saving every dollar that we can. That's also our responsibility.
And at that membership growth trajectory, that would barely make a dent in the overall that would be needed. And those other revenues that you mentioned would still continue, because we're not closing the pool. The pool will still be open. And actually, the public can rent the pool for, I believe it's about $50 an hour, to, to rent the pool. The pool will still have to be accessible and available to the community. It'll be accessible and available to our students, and it'll be accessible and available to the programs that exist now that do generate revenue, and that revenue will still come in. But the, the, the monumental cost that we have to bear to maintain the club portion of this, that is what will be gone. And, but the pool will still be there, and there'll be programs that, that kids can access during the summertime, I'm sure. And so it's, it's, it's not that the, that, that there's not going to be any ability to use this pool. I just want to make that clear. It's just that there won't be a membership club anymore after this, which is what is causing us the hemorrhage money in the six figures every year. And whether or not that loss is $176,000 this, this year, it will still be a significant one irregardless. And we have historical data to show it, and we have... And we have trends right now that are pointing that that's not, that we're not going to get the revenue that we were hoping. Because I made it very clear when we did this repricing of the plans. The only way this was going to work is if, one, we can have significant increase in a membership that is outside of the insurance category. Or a large percentage of those insurance members would convert to a pool membership. When, we had the public comment. We had commenters here that said, we will pay, we will pay, we will pay. I, so that did not happen. And so here we are again, looking at the, we're back in almost the same situation we were when we have, when we started this conversation. And this is one of those things that has been worked shot probably more than anything since I've been elected. And I, I think it's time to stop the bleeding and, and put an end to these losses and move forward with a student-focused facility with public access to use of facility. So, Dr. Con.
First of all, you said, you know, they would pay. And they have been paying. They're all paying more in their memberships. Every one of them is paying more already. That's because we inflated all of the membership costs. So they are already paying. It's not something that's delayed, you know? And it still goes back. I'm not opposed to going through the process. If it doesn't work, close it. Get it back to a rental facility if that's what. And that's guaranteeing approximately an $80,000 loss a year. We will take an $80,000 loss a year. So we're, this is an $80,000 difference that we're looking at. The $80,000 that we're going to lose no matter what, if we go to rentals, or the $80,000 we can keep at least to let the kids get through the summer, have their summer in a pool, and have a club that they can go to with their families and their friends. And then if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. We've given everybody a chance. We've all tried. That was what we had discussed. And I would prefer to stay with that discussion so we keep our community where it needs to be and happy.
Well, I would argue that that $80,000 is an investment in our students and our athletic programs. And the opposite is $175,000 loss to programs that don't benefit our school. So there is a difference.
It's $80,000. However you look at it, we're going to have spending $80,000.
Right, but that, but that's.
Can we actually clarify, Chair Fury? Can we actually clarify that? And I don't, Patty, I don't know if Patty is in the room. Maybe you can get all, like, accounting, finance, mumbo jumbo in here for us. But the way that I think of this, and I think it would be really helpful to use the appropriate terms. When I think about something that is for the district, that benefits the district, whether that's our employees, our students, I consider that a cost. It is a cost of running the business, the organization. It's a cost. When it is something that is not, that is outside of the mission, the scope, I consider that a loss, right? So one is a cost, one is a loss. And I, I'm just sharing that because that's what, how this makes sense to me because the Flagler School District does not operate for free. It is millions of dollars, right? I mean, it's a lot of money. There is a, a significant cost to running this district. And I, so for me, as I think through this, I'm well aware that we have this facility. It was donated or given to us. And so there is a cost of running it. Something that, again, Dave has done a really great job of is talking about the different other ways we could go and making it very clear. At this time, we do not have the budget to build a swimming pool for, is it Matanzas or F, for Matanzas? We don't have the money to build a brand-new pool for Matanzas. Frida Zamba Pool cannot accommodate our other swim, cannot accommodate both swim teams. So that was, to my knowledge, kind of one of the first things we talked about. Like, okay, if it needs, the parking lot needs to be fixed, and we've got all of these operating, these overhead expenses coming at us, is there a way around that? And I think we realized we have to keep Belt Air, the facility, open. I think, to me, now the question is, is this going to be a property that is a cost to the district but that is benefiting the district? Or are we going to keep it as a loss? And I'll just say one last thing on that. I, I do want to say this quickly. I believe in LaShaka Moore so much. I feel like her hands are tied with being under contract. It, it reminds me of the, the cell phone towers, right? And I think a lot of us were like, ugh, I hate that we don't have a say in these cell phone towers. We're like locked into this contract. And so when I think about this facility, if Superintendent Moore, for the benefit of the district, wanted to turn that facility into a wellness center, if, whatever with the pool, whatever, it just feels to me like this is, this is just, I think, Chrissy, you brought this up. I don't, I don't know if I'm saying this right. There's headwinds and tailwinds. I think tailwinds are the good, right, that move the plane faster. It just feels like this is a headwind. Again, I think I'm saying that right, to the district. But anyway, I digress. The point is, Patty, whether it's a cost or a, a loss, I don't know if you, if any of that makes sense or if you could speak to that at all.
I think a lot of it really is the way one views it. We are currently operating at a loss. If we make it just for our school use, there will be an ongoing cost of $80,000. If we've closed it to the, to the public and we turn it into a facility that we use for some other purpose, it then becomes an investment. So that cost becomes an investment to the school district. If that, if that makes sense.
It's still a cost.
No, yes, it, it is still a cost.
Well, so are books a cost? I mean, everything's a cost, but the.
Books are K-12.
I'm just saying, everything is, everything, if you're going to, if we're going to get into semantics over what label, the bottom line is, is that we're, we're going to lose less money as a student-focused facility. And we have a, a history of this pool just bleeding losses. And the, and the facility continues to need more maintenance because of the wear and tear on it. You know, it's, it's, I believe it's just time that we, we make, make a change. So I would entertain a motion if anybody wants to make one.
Excuse me, I would like to comment, if that's okay. So just want to share a couple of perspectives, I think, that may be of value. I think originally and always, this was, the idea of this was a joint-use facilities. This was going to be a facility that the community would benefit from and the school district would benefit from. Either way, you're covering the costs of running the facility. It doesn't matter. It seems as though, over the last several years, some of us have been, excuse my language, but hell-bent on just closing the pool. It has been a nonstop negative, negative, negative. Instead of looking at, what are we going to do to increase programming? What are we going to do to increase revenue? Renee came up with the idea of the SynchroBelt, or Fluid, and we gave that away. That was generating a significant amount of money every year. And we weren't always running at a loss. So, one, the idea that we're, we're not attempting to look at additional programming to bring in revenue, I can't understand. The other is, we keep hearing from the community and from Palm Coast, get in the budget cycle, put a request in. We haven't done that. Palm Coast should contribute. These are Palm Coast residents. In addition to that, we did.
Didn't we already try that?
No, we have not.
There was some discussion at that.
We have not followed the process, and we've been told.
Mr. Walker, wasn't there some conversation with the city about that? And they, they said they weren't interested?
Yes, good evening, Board. As it relates to reaching out to the City of Palm Coast, when Superintendent Middlestad was here, she did reach out to City of Palm Coast Administration asking if there was an appetite to help support the Belt Air Swim Racket Club. And we received a letter back stating that it's the position of the city administration that they do not have any additional funding to assist with the operations of the Belt Air Swim Racket Club.
Okay, so the key in that was the city administration. We've heard from several elected officials that said, follow the budget process. Put a request in for a budget request. So those are two different entities. The entity making the decision is the Palm Coast City Council, not the administration. That's one. The last conversation we had on this issue, and I do feel as though we made a promise, you keep a promise. We said we were going to let this go through August, and we were going to evaluate it mid-year, which is what, in my opinion, this is, right? I look at this building almost as though a loss leader. So Sally, you talk about a program, whether it's internal or external, right? I view this as a joint facility that can and should benefit the community and the school district, right? Loss leader in the sense that, okay, we're going to lose maybe some money. That doesn't have to be the case if we increase programming and we do some other things. But let's say we lose money on it. That's a loss leader. These are taxpayers. They benefit from this property. This property was a gift to us. It buys support from the community. It is a give-back to the community and the taxpayers. There's no reason why it can't be a joint use. Regardless if we end it, we're still going to be spending $80,000 to just keep it running. So when you look at a loss of 176, it's not 176,000 because you're still losing 80, even if you close the facility to the community. I'm not finished, Chairman Fury. Give me a minute. Also, keep in mind that if we do close it, as of whenever, today, tomorrow, next week, it's going to be a cost to us as well because we're going to have to provide refunds to every single person that has a membership and have to deal with the insurance companies. This is something that's come up again and again, that we have to be very careful with how we state this. There are no, and never have been, any K-12 dollars used to support this facility. That is illegal. We are not allowed to do that.
No one claimed that there were.
No, but you can't take that money. You can't, it's not like you're paying for athletics. You mentioned athletics. It's not like whatever cost savings you come up with, you're putting in athletics. The dollars come out of FTC. And this was never a budget issue before, when FTC was under one umbrella. And just like a department in a store, you may have a department that is losing dollars and another department that has excess dollars and making additional revenue. But at the end of the day, it all works out. This wasn't an issue when it was under the one umbrella. Am I wrong? Right, so it was even. The FTC was running.
Extended day dollars picked it up.
I personally have a problem with that. For parents paying for a pool that's, that's operating at a loss, yeah.
But I understand what you're saying. But what I'm saying is, one, have we put all of our efforts? I mean, we had a great plan put together. What was it, P-47, 74, 73? I was close, I was close. But we had a great plan that we had discussed at one point in time. It was prior to you all being on the board, but pretty much, maybe the year before, where we talked about moving adults with disabilities there and having an additional program opportunity out there. So, one, I think you keep the promise that was made. Two, it's currently benefiting both the school district and the community. And three, I think you, you look at the taxpayers investing in the property. It may be a loss leader, but what you're getting back in support, I mean, you've heard the stories multiple times. Over the years, we've all heard the stories about what kind of an impact it's had on community members. So I just, I, I just think this is a whole lot more than looking at a number on a page and saying, we're just going to close it. I think there's a whole lot more involved here. And I don't think Superintendent Moore has even had an opportunity to come up with an idea or a proposal on how to turn it around in regards to any kind of programming. So, and again, Renee did that. She came up with an opportunity to generate revenue with Fluid.
But those can still exist. That's what.
But my point is, but the point is, Mr. Fury, we gave that away. That was an income generator. We gave that program away. The idea was to come up with, and the last revenue generated from that, I think, was, I want to say $75,000? $75,000.
But this has nothing to do with the club. This has nothing to do with Belt Air Membership Club.
No, but it does. That's what I'm saying.
It does not.
No, but it does. Renee was charged with coming up with opportunities to generate revenue. Okay, she did that. It was bringing in $75,000. There was, there are other leadership involved, and the decision was made not to keep that in-house because we weren't going to pay the coach. That then was taken and basically turned into a nonprofit and run independently.
But again, that was covering a deficit.
No.
Then there was another item covering the deficit.
My, my point is, we are not creating programming to generate additional revenue.
Well, then we would just have more revenue if we didn't have the club.
No.
Basically, we're working to try and pay for something that loses money.
No, what I'm saying is, we are not, we are not coming up with additional programming to generate additional income and revenue.
We can still do that.
When is that going to happen?
And then we can offset the $80,000.
Well, part of the argument has been that every time Renee brings up something and generates something, it's not put in as revenue. That has been an ongoing discussion.
Yeah, but she has her own cost from her program. We just got that email. And she did put the revenue out there, but then there was an expense about it. And there was, there was a positive in those numbers. It was only a couple of thousand dollars, three, four thousand dollars. I mean, but we're talking about, these are just not going to bridge the gap. And we can do all the programs we want. We can still continue to do what you're suggesting. And that would only offset the $80,000 that we would have, not the $175,000.
It's $80,000.
The club should support itself.
You keep saying $176,000, okay? It's still going to cost $80,000. So it's $80,000 of a loss.
The club should sustain itself. The club on its own should sustain itself.
I'm not disagreeing with you. What I'm disagreeing with is we haven't even had any of the additional programming that has been generated and that revenue and income associated with the club.
Well, Flagler Fluids is gone now. We can't, we can't chase those dollars. I wasn't here when they happened. I don't know anything about that, that situation. If we want to start another program like that, and it can generate $75,000, I don't know what the costs were to, to, to have that instructor and everything else. But at the end of the day, those opportunities don't leave if we do what we're talking about here. All this still exists. The only difference is, is that we're no longer running a health club. We, that is not, we should not be in that, that business.
No, but you're saying you're ending a commitment to the community. That's what you're saying.
No, I'm not. I'm saying that, that program can no longer sustain itself. This has been going on, this was donated back, what, 40 years ago? I believe it was said. going on, this was donated back, what, 40 years ago, I believe it was said, and it's served the community well. But it's come to a point now where it's at the expense of our, our students.
It is not.
Well, it's being paid for by dollars that are generated through the school that can benefit our students, right? Those aftercare dollars that are-
They're not going to go back to the school.
Where are they going to go to?
They're, they're part of FTC's budget.
Yeah, but FTC, it will go to FTC. I'm saying, it will go to stop paying for a money-losing enterprise. It will go to something better used. That is what will happen with those dollars. I mean, this is just simple. I just feel like we're trying to confuse something that is very simple. And all these opportunities that you bring up, we can still do those and offset the 80,000 dollars that will cost the pool, and we won't have the difference between the 176 and the 80. So that goes away the minute we get, we're done with the club.
I guess at the end of the day, philosophically, we just have a complete different opinion on this. I see this as an investment in the community and a give back and a payback to taxpayers. I do not have an issue with that. These are not K-12 dollars. Period. End of story.
I just have a question for our attorney. Have you looked at the ITT agreement? Are we allowed to be doing what we're doing? I don't know if anybody's, I mean, I understand it's a pretty thick document, so I have not seen it, but I understand. Who has?
I am, I'm sorry. There, I know that, and I don't have the information in front of me, but I do know that Mr. Freeman has in his binder a position statement from our previous board attorney around any restrictions that we have. I'm sure Mr. Delaney has not had an opportunity to look at that, but we do have that amongst the information that we have been gathering for the presentations.
And end up, and our former attorney, we've had this conversation going on, and she never brought up any legal challenges that we would have doing this. She was here through all of that conversation.
Well, you didn't particularly trust her judgment before, so I'm not sure why we're trusting at this moment. Is there anything in there?
I'll entertain a motion if anybody would like to bring one.
I'm prepared to bring a motion, and there's still a future for the pool, I'm sure. This will give us an opportunity to do something else.
If I just may, because I just think Dr. Conklin said something, like, just really wonderful, and I just wanted to speak to that quickly. Just the spirit of, like, we all have our individual perspectives. And so, as I'm listening to the conversation, and I think about the community, community members and taxpayers, taxpayers including working parents paying taxes. I'm pretty sure the majority of the people up here are paying taxes. But when I ran, Dr. Conklin, it was really in the spirit of getting us to an A district. At the time, FPC was rated a C. We were making national news for all the wrong reasons. There was, in my opinion, a lot of dysfunction, which is why I ran. I wanted us to be an A district. That helps us recruit doctors because doctors want to live in communities where their kids can go to top schools. It helps property values. Everybody wants A districts, A schools. And so, when I think about this conversation, you and I do just kind of see it differently, right? You're thinking of the taxpayers, specifically those who use the Bell Terr Swim Racket Club, and you want to be their advocate, and I think that is so commendable. I just see it differently. I think about the opportunity costs that we're not even talking about. I don't want anybody in this room, Patty, La Shaka, Dave, ideating, spending any time ideating on how to create new programs, maybe adult learning, revenue, recreation. We have so much work to do. Again, this is all Sally's opinion, right, how I see it. We have so much work to do. I think La Shaka has moved mountains already. I am so thrilled again about her choice of Angela O'Brien to join her at that level. But it's a heavy lift. I mean, there is much to do. And so, I don't, to me, it's not even like getting in the weeds of the 70,000 or 80,000 or the pockets of money. This facility would still be available for use, just like our basketball courts would be. I just, I think this district needs to get out from under this, this, I mean, we can call it dysfunction. And the thing is, and this is the last thing I'll say about that, this, anything that is kind of like pre-my term, if it was happening before I started, then I, I kind of go, right? Like, this, this has been an ongoing conversation for years, right or wrong, right? I'm not going to speak to whether another board member, if they brought it up, if they should have or shouldn't have. This has been a point of contention for, certainly before my time. And so, I think we both want, in general, the same things, right? We want this district to be very successful. I think we just kind of, maybe see things a little bit differently, and that's fine. But I just, thank you. I just wanted to speak to where, where I am with this. To me, it very much is dollars and cents, absolutely. I keep being told that we don't have money, right? Our general fund is not at 5%, the fund balance. I could go into the dollars and cents of it, but it certainly is dollars and cents, but it's also, it's like a distraction we don't need. It's a responsibility, we don't need more responsibilities. La Shaka Moore, I know, is working so many hours every week just to follow our mission. We were presented today with our strategic plan. That is why we are here. That is why we were elected. The strategic plan, the education of our students, getting us to an A school district. Like, it's just, to me, it's time that we laser focus on the mission. And if something is outside of scope, whether it's a benefit or not, and please know, I would love everybody in this room to have a million dollars, their dream everything. I want what's, I want everybody to be happy and have a great quality of life. I want everybody to have a job. I want, right? But we, these are the tough decisions we have to make for the benefit of the strategic plan and the mission of Flagler Schools. So that, that is where my mind is with all of this.
Okay. Chair, I'd like to bring the motion. All right. I would like to make a motion to close the Bell Terr Swim Racket Club to the general public for pool membership effective June 30th, 2024, which is the end of the current fiscal year, and gym memberships will be phased out by the end of 2024.
Okay, I need a second?
I will second that.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Kim, just as part of further discussion, is there anything, Attorney Delaney, I would just ask, is there anything before we vote on this that we need to be made aware of?
Just for clarity's sake, it might be helpful to indicate whether the will of the board is to go ahead and issue those notices to the four contracted agencies that, to start the clock running for two of them and put the other two on notice that by the end of this year. So, if, what the intent of the motion is to also go ahead and issue those notices of intent to terminate, that might be helpful to include with the motion.
Yeah, that was, what I had mentioned is that we would seek that mutual termination. So if you agree with your motion, so if that was what you agreed to, that we could get mutual termination, if we can get that sooner, the gym would close before the end of the year. So if we just clarify that in your motion.
Okay. State that again, Mr. Attorney.
Kristy, before you restate the motion with Attorney Delaney's assistance, would you be willing to look at a compromise of letting the school, letting the pool go to August, so that we at least capture the benefit and the community has the benefit of a summer pool?
The reason I'm going with the June 30th is because it's the end of our fiscal year, so I'm just trying to keep it clean for our staff purposes.
All those kids, my heart's going to break for them.
Does it create a hardship if we go to August?
Do you want to amend your motion, Ms. Chong?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Do you want to amend your motion?
Okay. What was the end part about the gym memberships?
It sounds like there's a suggestion of moving and closing the pool as of June 30, 2024, to members of the public for membership use. In addition, direct staff to issue notices of intent to terminate the gym programs before the end of this year, and to potentially negotiate earlier exits.
Very long, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Let's try and be as specific as you can in it.
All right. Direct staff to notify issues of intent to end memberships by the end of this year.
To terminate the contractual relationships and negotiate earlier exits if possible.
Contractual. And earlier exits if possible. Okay. Okay, so the motion is to close the Bell Terr Swim Racket Club to the general public for pool membership effective June 30th, 2024, which is the end of the fiscal year. Gym memberships will be phased out by the end of 2024, and we will direct staff to notify issues of intent to end memberships and terminate contractual memberships and earlier exits if possible.
Okay. Do, do we need to second that again? We had a second. Yeah, so I need a second for that motion.
I'll second the revised motion.
Okay. And if there are no other comments, I'll call the vote.
Can I add on to discussion? Is that something I can do or no?
Not right now.
I'll add it on to at the end, then I guess.
So I have a motion by Ms. Chong and a second by Ms. Hunt. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
So the motion carries, 3-2.
Very sad day. Thank you for your help.
Thank you.
So now, we will move on to board member requests. Seeing none, we will-
Oh, Chair Fury, I'm so sorry. I just got a couple things I wanted to follow up on. There was discussion, I want to say at a previous workshop. Chanel brought it up again today at the workshop. But there's been discussion about having public comment at this board meeting unrelated to agenda items. Could we either, along with the general public comment tied to agenda items, could we allow for like 15 minutes for non-agenda, one? And/or could we move public comment to, at the very minimum, above, you know, board member requests, or could we move it up in some way? I feel like there was discussion and we never, forgive me if I'm wrong, but did we ever land on something?
Point of information. Just to highlight, Sally, we did have this discussion.
Yeah.
And you weren't there. It was at a retreat. That's when we had, that's when we, actually, we were going through all of our, our organization and how the meetings run and things.
I brought it up again after the retreat.
I know, after the retreat. But I brought it up at the retreat, and it was decided at the retreat that, and I said I could go either way. I really don't care how. And it was determined by consensus that it stays the way that we have it because business got done faster. That was at the retreat, just so you know.
Yeah, and I brought it up again after the retreat because I felt that we, it was something that we should discuss again.
I'm willing to revisit that. I don't think it's a major thing to change.
Okay, can we bring that to the next workshop for discussion, please? Thank you.
Yeah, and just something for the, again, something that's come up for the community. And then I just want to do a quick follow-up. Do we have a timeline of our attorney, our board attorney? It's, so make sure I'm, I'm understanding where we're at. We were going to kind of evaluate the money that we're spending on different services.
And interview.
So I just wonder if we have, like, timelines on that process?
At our last meeting, we indicated that we would bring that forward to you in an April meeting. So we will bring that forward in April.
Perfect.
Well, just along those lines, the one group that had submitted would be a conflict of interest because they have now taken the position with Palm Coast, the city of Palm Coast, am I correct?
So now that we are staffed and our purchasing department, we will revisit that, and we will have an update for the board as to our appropriate next steps.
Yes, because, I mean, we would have to, we would have to do a new request for proposals, RFP.
If that is the direction that the, if that is the direction that the board wants to go. But we will get that information and have that presented to you. The next, August 2nd meeting is pretty packed, so we can move some things around if you want to do it for August 2nd. If not, it would be on the August 16th.
April, April.
I mean, I'm sorry. Not August, April. The April 2nd agenda went live today. And so we can make some adjustments to it, but it's pretty packed already. So we would bring that forward to you at the next April meeting, which I think is the 16th of April.
I think that would be better. Just, we'd get a little bit more data, too, on billing, and it's in the same month, so.
I just want to make sure we're, you know, on top of it.
Yep.
And we have Attorney Delaney, but there's not, like, an end date? Are we running any risk of not having counsel? Are we in a good place?
I think this is a great place. So I'm very much appreciative of the opportunity to work with you all.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Any other board member requests? Okay, seeing none. We will move on to public comment. Do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
Yes, we do. April Williams.
Okay.
Good afternoon or good night. I don't know if this is allowed. We are actually trying to get some directive in regards to the start, the start age for kindergarten for my grandson. He's actually in a pre-K program now that we pay for, and we weren't advised until yesterday that the Methodist School does not have a kindergarten program starting 2024 to 2025. My son signed him up for the Imagine School, and they advised us today, yesterday, that if he doesn't turn five by September 1st, he cannot attend. So, that little boy is so bright. They're trying to say that he has to redo the pre-K program or he has to sit out. So I want to know, like, what options do we have to make sure that his fire is not doused in regards to going ahead with his kindergarten classmates or being left behind because of this September 1st, five by September 1st guideline? Actually, he turns five the 12th of September.
You sent me that email.
Yes, I did.
Okay. I'm like, this sounds familiar.
And I left a message for La Shaka, too. So we're definitely at a quandary at this point as to what, you know, I don't want him to be in a rabbit hole, being a year behind because of 11 days. And he doesn't need that TK kindergarten, which is if you're not ready for kindergarten, they give you two years. He's actually so advanced. He's bored in pre-K right now. So it would be an injustice to hold him back for a year or keep him home. I'm sure that there's other kids that their birthday falls shortly in between. I, I don't know. We're just at a loss. We don't know what to do. So we're in need of some guidance, help, directive, move out of the state of Florida. I don't know.
We're not ignoring you. We're just not, I'm sorry, Chairman Fury, I just wanted, we can't get into back and forth during public comment.
Okay.
But after the meeting, I see La Shaka shaking her head, we'll be able to connect you with some staff.
Okay, I appreciate it.
And yes, I have a September 15th baby, and so I know exactly what you're talking about. I'm from the state of Illinois, where you could be like November. And so, yeah, Florida, it's a very early cutoff.
There's a cutoff, but like, within days. I mean, I can understand October, November.
But you're in good hands with Superintendent Moore.
Okay. I appreciate it. So we look forward to hearing from you in regards to that topic, and appreciate the time.
Thank you.
We'll get back to, thank you very much for your comments. Do we have any other comments?
No, she left.
You would like to speak? Please come forward.
All right.
Welcome.
Good evening. When I heard that the funding for the school resource deputies is in jeopardy, my heart sunk. I was in shock. I used to live in Broward County. On February 14th, 2018, I was watching the Marjorie Stoneman Douglas shooting live. The shooting was 30 minutes from my school. That could have been me. I don't want that tragedy to happen, not only in Flagler County, but nationally. We need to know that our schools are protected, and by taking away funding for the school resource officers, you are taking away the trust that the parent had in the local government. Parents drop their child off, trusting that their child will be protected and safe. will be protected and safe. School resource, school resource deputies make sure that the school is always protected even after school. They also play a crucial role responding to incidents such as violence and emergency situations. For example, the deputies and school staff prevented injuries from a student from a knife. If the county takes away funding for school resource deputies, you might be taking a relationship or a mentorship from a student. Many students look up to the officers and think of them as a friend or a parent that they never had. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good job.
And I just want you to rest easy tonight and I assure you, we will make sure that your school resource deputy is going to be right there at your school. Do we have any other, any other public comments? Seeing no one approach, we will move to closing comments and we'll start down there.
So good evening, everyone. It's great to be back. Unfortunately, I was unable to attend the last month's meeting due to illness and I appreciate the adaptability and understanding of our board members. So I don't know the full context of the, like, Bell Terrace Women Rocket Club, obviously, but is the gym located on the same, like, property? So it's been in a separate building, okay. So kind of my understanding is if you're extending the gym out to December, that's entering the next fiscal year anyway, is it not? So you'll be dealing with that issue anyway, but you're not willing to do that with the pool to allow it to go into summer? I mean, that's just kind of my take on things, I'm not sure. I'll go ahead and move into my notes here. So next Friday, April 5th is our prom with the theme Meet Me in the Moonlight. We have many spirit days planned for the week leading up to the dance that will bring us into the moonlight mood. So our Student Government Association once again outdid themselves with a creative prom ticket. This year's ticket is a coaster, which is in the shape of a moon. So that's definitely pretty unique. And you know, last year it was a poker chip because the theme was A Night in Las Vegas. So we definitely have a very creative SGA. So Metansus is proud to have the first ever brother sister state champion wrestlers in FHSAA history. Jordan and Maria Mills are both individual state champions in wrestling with our MHS team finishing third overall. Our Future Problem Solvers team has advanced to the international competition and are currently preparing and fundraising for it and we're incredibly proud of them and wish them luck at the conference. So entering the last quarter of the year, our scholars are preparing for their ACE and AP tests, their Daytona State Finals and EOCs. And we are looking forward to a highly successful testing season as our amazing students demonstrate their excellence in academics. This Thursday night, we hope that all incoming ninth graders and their families will join us at Metansus for the Future Pirate Night from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM to learn more about our extracurriculars and everything else our school offers. And as of that, thank you and have a good night. Thank you.
All right, so good evening, everyone. I'm also very excited to share some of our school FPC's recent accomplishments and upcoming events. So I'd first like to congratulate our FPC baseball team for defeating Metansus with a score of nine to five and our FPC boys and girls tennis team sweeping Metansus with scores of seven to zero from both teams. As well as, I want to recognize our FPC girls relay team, our in specific four by 100 relay team for breaking a decade old school record in their event and winning first place at that track meet. Furthermore, our FPC girls wrestling team did recently achieve state runner up with two members, Jocelyn Johnson and Christina Boardman, becoming the first female state champions in FPC school history. So big congratulations to them. Moving on, earlier this month, our FPC SGA also attended their state conference at the Florida Association of Student Councils and received not only a golden medallion, but also two third place projects, four first place projects, second place environmental procedure and first place for the President's Choice Award due to their outstanding performance. Not long after, our FPC Future Problem Solvers also returned from their state competition with numerous awards from first to fifth place in all competitions with invitations to international competitions. Even following them, our symphonic bands earned straight superior ratings for overall superior, as well as one band earning an overall excellent rating. It's similar to Metansus, on this Thursday, on March 28th, from 6:08, we will also have our FPC Preview Night. We welcome the classes 2028 to come and visit our campus, to tour it, experience elected choices and meet our athletic coaches and club sponsors. Lastly, although this date is a bit far away, on Saturday, April 27th, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM, we will be having our Team Summit. This is accumulation of essentially all of our Kingtown Hall so far and just reiterating over some of the topics and going more in depth with some of them with lunch, breakout sessions and fun activities for all the students. We encourage any team within Flagler County or anyone interested in the event as a student to join. And besides that, thank you all for being here and have a good night.
I really don't have any comments tonight. I understand the board's decision for closing the pool. I will say that it is a sad day. And I hope moving forward, we can look at some sort of joint use or that at least we come up with an opportunity for community members to look at renting the pool in an affordable way. It was a gift to us and I hope we can figure a way to give it back in some form or fashion to taxpayers. That's it.
Yeah, I, I've had actually a tremendous 24 hours, except for the last half hour. So let me start with good things. Last night, we had the privilege to participate in a wonderful meal provided by the Ed Foundation. And it was with our Teacher of the Year, Employee of the Year and our Rookie of the Years meal. And just to sit down and break bread with people and see a lot of old friends and colleagues, it's always a pleasure and it's always a nice time and it was an excellent affair. And I'd like to thank the Ed Foundation for their support and the Kiwanis who also was involved with that. Probably the best thing that I've done in a very long time happened this morning and I got up really early to get over to the courthouse in Volusia because a friend, a family friend, was making an adoption. And there's nothing better than seeing adoption. What was even better about this particular adoption was it was shared by her second grade class, Ms. Broderick's class in Benel. They had them on video and there was about, I'd say about 30 of us there to support the family in this adoption. So it's just really nice to see a little one find their forever family. And that was very exciting. I'd like to also, I had the wonder to participate in one of FPC's American Government classes. They invited me. Iveda Vargas, Renaya Anderson and Olivia Elder took the time to ask me to sit in on their government class and I'm really glad I did because there were presentations on how to become advocates, how to take a thought or something and present it in a proper manner to get action. And they did a big piece on CTE and the need for us to even expand more. And they wanted to know where our mechanical class went because they really, there's kids that want to be mechanics and they're looking forward to hopefully seeing that expand sometime in the future. So being able to be in the classroom with all these seniors, a whole classroom of seniors, and you know senioritis is starting already. But, yep, but it's always invigorating to be able to do that and have some share of that. I also had the privilege to, to spend time at the Summer Resource Fair, which was at Wadsworth, not Wadsworth, but actually Buddy Building. And, you know, we hear all the time, there's nothing to do. Kids are always saying, I got nothing to do, I got nothing to do. Well, if you go into that fair, you'd have seen a lot of things to do over the summer. And there are a lot of different activities from all kinds of things, from robotics to regular summer classes that you can take advantage of. So look around, check out the flyers, I know Facebook has a lot of them, and see what to get your child involved in things that are positive in this summer because you don't want them not to be involved. And then the only other thing that I wanted to say is that, you know, I had the great time of going to watch Metansus's play ABBA. By ABBA, they put on Mamma Mia. I've seen that 100 times and it never gets old. And it's always nice to see, especially a young troupe like that. They had 100 kids up out, 100 kids in that performance from middle school through high school. And it's always nice to see that kind of activity. So that's what makes Flagler Schools great. Keeping people active, keeping them involved and everybody be enjoying it through the community. And with that, I wish you all a good night.
Just for the closing comments time, I just wanted to address, the workshops that we have are a bit of a blessing and a curse. I know that they're necessary because there's a lot of presentations. We're provided with a lot of information as board members and it provides time for discussion. If those workshops did not happen, we would be here in this room for hours and hours. In the workshop earlier today, I, I or Will asked if we could close the gym by the fiscal year. And our attorney explained to us that per contracts, we have to give either a 90 or a 120 day notice. So, so if you kind of heard the motion and the discussion of if we can meet a mutual agreement with the, with the insurance companies where we can end that gym membership sooner, we would potentially like to do that. But we are potentially contractually kind of bound to see the gym membership through, at least for Silver Sneakers and stuff like that through December. I really appreciate you bringing that up, but it makes me also think about, I'll hear like public comments and we do have members of the public, I have observed, who kind of come in and out of the conversation. Maybe they'll miss three board meetings or maybe they don't ever watch a workshop. And so I'm so glad you said what you said because you had like half of the information. And so the conversation here is making no sense, right? Just like you said, there like there's a hypocrisy here. Like why would you close one and not the other? Because you had half of the information. And so I'm going to use this example to just really share more broadly that there are so many more conversations, details that a lot of members of the public just don't hear or they're not, they're not present as much as any given board member. And so Chair Furry kind of spoke to this earlier. If there's ever something that like doesn't add up or you think someone is really awful that they made a certain decision up here on this board, it's worth kind of asking, like, hey, that does not seem right. Because I think any one of these board members could kind of speak to, like, this is why I was thinking that or this was some additional information. So again, I just want to appreciate you using your voice and sharing and I hope that that maybe provides a little bit of clarity. Now whether you agree with the decision or not, again, is your, right, your choice and your opinion and we each have one. But I wanted to make sure we ended the night or that I ended the night by sharing that with you. So thank you and have everybody have a good night.
I don't really have a lot of thoughts tonight. I'm just a mom fighting the latest virus that the kids bring home. But I will say God bless all of our elementary school teachers and I hope that they are also not having to deal too much with it. But that's our school health advisory update today. All right, have a good night.
Yes, I'd just like to say we, we had a wonderful night at the gala last night at the Channel Side and I really just could see how special our honorees felt that they were honored in that way. And it was, it was wonderful just to break bread with them. And I really loved the format that you laid out Superintendent Moore. It just gave an opportunity for everybody to talk more, get to know each other a little bit more. And I also saw that you have some pretty good dance moves that you pulled out every once in a while. There wasn't a dance floor, but anyways, no, it was a wonderful night and I just want to congratulate all of our honorees. And that's my comments for this evening.
Well, good evening. It is the fourth quarter and I'm disappointed to say that I have officially lost count. I know. And I didn't have enough time to pull up my calendar. I think we're 136, 137, no.
Countdown clock.
But needless to say, we are in the fourth quarter and I want to just take the opportunity to remind our families that this is a great time to revisit our code of student conduct with our, with your, with your child as well as our student progression plan. Look often at grades, make sure you as a family, you have access to Skyward. If you do not have access to Skyward, call your school's registrar and they will get you connected to Skyward so you can stay abreast of how your child is performing in school each and every day. In this season, there will be many very important assessments that our students will take and we ask that you just always do your best and it's a great opportunity for us to see all that you've learned. For our families, we want to just remind you of the importance of partnership with the schools, having a voice and using that voice in your relationship with our schools, be it with your child's teacher, with the administration or the other employees that work at the school. So partnership is extremely important. And this time of year, we have so many events happening on our campuses. On Saturday, I was able to make it to four different events. Now by the end of the night, I was definitely tired. And so I say to our community, I say to our parents, please continue to watch our social media as well as our website to see current events that's happening. We have a job fair that's coming up in April. It's a great opportunity for you to make a decision to come and work for Flagler Schools as we prepare for our staff for the 24, 25 school year. And then I want to take a moment to speak to the comment around safe schools. And day 136, I was right, thank you. Thank you for helping to confirm that for me. Happy 136th day of school. I want to take a moment just to, to talk a little bit about safe schools and our responsibility to have safe school officers on our campus. And our county and our community have been a great partner with the school district for many, 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 many years, many years. And so there was this talk about a letter that I received and a conversation that was going to be had around different things that our community and our county supports. And I did have that meeting. And so I want you to know as a student that that conversation really was around what are the opportunities that are available to us to ensure that we can continue to have law enforcement officers on our campus, our agreement to always look for different opportunities, maybe there are grants that are involved, maybe looking at some of the dollars that are available to us through our half cent sales tax and other means in order to make sure that we can keep our commitment to have our deputies on our campus. Because what you and I know, that it's not just about having law enforcement officers on our campus, but it's about having our law enforcement officers on our campus. Because we know that if someone comes to Flagler County and they come to our campuses and they want to do harm, that our law enforcement officers are coming and when they get there, it's going to be a problem. And so that's the confidence that we have and our community has that. And so we want you to know that, yes, that we did have that talk, but the talk was really about what's available to us. Let's always be good stewards and look for opportunities to have dollars available so that we can keep our commitment to having our law enforcement officers are on our campus. So I want you to know that from me and we'll continue to do that. All right, and good for you for coming and asking the question and using your voice to not just wander out in the community, but coming to ask the question directly. You can always email me. You can also email your school board members. You can also email the county commissioners and they will definitely respond. And I know one for sure that will definitely respond to you, okay? All right, I hope you guys have a great day. Happy 136th day of school.
Thank you Superintendent Moore. This meeting is adjourned.